Hi everyone. Welcome, good evening. Thank you for showing up today. I'm Kalisha, a minister and pastoral counselor of Web of Life and Quinn's co-host. Let's first start by acknowledging the traditional lands of indigenous people who have been living on our lands for thousands of years. We recognize their ongoing connection for our lands and their contribution to our society. We honor their culture, traditions, and elders, past, present, and future. Let's also acknowledge what is happening around the world, especially at the time of this recording, in Israel and Gaza. Let's just take a moment of silence to acknowledge all of the earth honoring beings, past, present, and future, that are impacted here, there, and everywhere. There's no expectation that you will like or agree with any or everything you receive tonight, so please take what you can use and put aside what you cannot. We're not here to force you to believe or do anything. Your soul will consent to what is right for you. We hope you will use grace should you find yourself being challenged with anything that is being offered. And this night may not look perfect, and that's okay. But let's put aside any judgments we place on the expectations of others and on ourselves, and acknowledge that perfectionism is part of the social conditioning that we've been taught in order to keep us out of alignment with our true gifts and talents. Another thing we've been conditioned to do is operate in the doing mind. We try to get all the nuggets we can by doing and not receiving. So since this is being recorded, we encourage you to be present and leave space to just receive without the intention to do anything right now. That's how you get the message and the guidance that you need. Before I turn it over to Quinn, let's take a moment to center ourselves and focus our intentions for this gathering. Let us open our hearts, our minds to the wisdom, and a deep sense of gratitude to the guidance that will be shared with us today. May we be inspired, uplifted, and transformed by this experience. May this be a time of healing, growth, and transformation for all of us. Whether you're here live or listening, thank you again for being here and showing up today for yourself and for everyone. Now I will turn it over to Quinn.
Thank you, Kalisha. And I am simply welcoming Harta, who will start us off tonight. And I'm very pleased that you said yes, both June and Harta, for the two sessions, the live sessions today. And so I will right now turn it over to Harta. Thank you for being here, Harta.
Thank you, Quinn. Hello, everybody. Brothers and sisters, it's lovely to see everybody. Some new faces and some old friends. It's lovely to be here with all of you. It's a great honor to be involved with this Web of Life. So tonight, what I was thinking is sharing with you all the breath journey of self-healing. And the invitation here tonight is to invite the elementals. And the theme is connecting with the elementals of the Chinese medicine that is correlated to our organs. And this is just a very brief, brief connection. So I'm not looking at the yin and the yang. I'm just looking at the big organs and connecting with the elementals. So just very briefly, before I go into how to do the breath, when we work with the element of fire, we will be referring to our heart. So this is an experiential journey. So when we get to the heart, when I guide you all to the heart, you're welcome to place a hand or two on your heart as we breathe the element of fire. And then when we invite the element of wood, you're invited to place your hand on the liver. And when we connect with the element of water, you're invited to place your hands over your kidneys. And then when it comes to the element of metal, you're invited to place your hands over the lungs. And finally, when we connect with the element of earth, you're invited to place your hands on the stomach. And when we do this self-healing with the elementals, at any point, you are invited to connect with your place of resource on your body. And this is a place on your body where you feel the greatest comfort, where it brings you peace, where it brings you joy, where when you place your hand on that part of your body, it automatically transports you to a place in your mind that gives you peace, that brings you comfort, that brings you solace, contentment. And this can be a place, if it's a place in your mind and you work visually, then it could be a place that you've been to before, or even a place of your mind's construct. So this is a double invitation. It's a self-healing, but also a connection with your place of resource. If you have one already, if you haven't, then this exercise will assist you in finding a felt sense experience of a body, a place on your body, where when you place your hands there, you know you are safe. So anytime, anywhere, when you place your hand there, it's a reminder, "I am safe." So this journey will be done via the conscious connected breathing. And this is a technique done with an open mouth. It's conscious, so you're awake. You're doing it in a conscious mode. Done with an open mouth. We do this with an open mouth because we're maximizing the amount of air that we take in. You can do it via the nose, but because the passage when the nostrils is restricted and constricted, we find with the conscious connected breathing, the experience, the greatest transformation happens when we do with an open mouth. The emphasis is on the inhalation. So when you inhale consciously with an open mouth, when we exhale, we relax into the exhalation. But this technique is done with no gaps in between the inhalation and the exhalation, no gaps between the exhalation and the next inhalation. So it becomes like a cycle. And I will demonstrate to you right now. So just making sure your jaws are relaxed, and we can always do little jaw exercises. And the wider you open the mouth, obviously, the greater amount of oxygen you will receive. So if you do a smaller opening, that's fine too. But most important is you want your mouth to be, your jaws to be relaxed. So I'll demonstrate and I'll do three conscious connected breaths. So that's done in a pretty slow pace. During the journey, we'll have about a 25-minute musical journey. And you may hear me invite you to increase the pace of your breath. And the music, the tempo of the music may also increase. And you're invited to follow the tempo of the breath, your own breath, as well as the music. So when you feel you would like to lean into the experience of, "How can I charge my breath to bring in more of the spirit of air into my life and give space for growth and evolution?" When we increase our pace, it will sound and look like this. So it's faster, but just because it's faster doesn't mean that the breath is shallow. So you're still taking, remember the emphasis is the in-breath. I'm still taking deep breaths in. And the one way you know you're taking deep breaths in is placing your hand on the stomach. And on the inhale, your stomach will extend. And on the exhale, your stomach would fall in. So let's do a little demonstration together. Let's do this together. I don't see everyone, so I'm going to see some gallery view perhaps. So let's all do this together. If you have your video on, that'd be great, because then I can monitor how your body is responding. And if you don't, that's fine too. But at any time, if you're struggling with it, then I would just say, "Just do this with a nose-nostral breathing, but do it in a way with the intention of, "We're bringing in the spirit of air with the inhalation, "and we're relaxing into the exhalation. Receiving with the inhalation and releasing with the exhalation." So let's do this together. And I'm going to use my hand as a demonstration of inhalation and exhalation. So let's begin. Last one. So just with that little practice, notice how your body is feeling. Right now, I can feel pins and needles and tingling sensation. And you know, when we do a breath journey, what we're doing is we're working with our autonomous nervous system. Okay? So the felt sense experience of when we're feeling into this, when our body is responding, "Oh gosh, there's a lot of air coming in. There's a change in here." There are some physical, as well as psychological and emotional responses. You may feel a heightened sense of elevation, emotional elevation. You may feel hot, you may feel cold. You may feel a sense of joy, or you may even feel sadness. So the range of emotions you may encounter during this journey is very much a response of your body's nervous system to your intention of this breath journey. Our intention tonight is self-healing. But because we're working with our nervous system, it may, it may trigger heightened experiences. So at any time this happens, let's invite our spirit friends, our spirit helpers, our guides, and any higher conscious that you're working with, gods, goddesses, divine spirits, the divine Tao. Let's welcome them all tonight to be with us, to be with each other, to hold us in a sacred container, that we can be accountable for our own healing, that we can be responsible and hold each other, and hold a healing space for each other. And during any time during this journey, if you're feeling you need assistance or healing, then just raise your hand. And I will offer reiki, distant reiki. At any time, any of our animus ministers here, if you feel called to offer healing, then by all means, do so. At the same time, if you do not wish to receive healing, then also please raise your hand, and we will not offer healing. But if you feel you need support in another way, then do instant message me or Quinn, or any of the animus ministers. Is that okay with you, Quinn? Just nod your head. And the other, one of the very pronounced sensation is tetany. And this is basically characterized by cramping. And this is as a result of the gaseous exchange in our body. And when our blood pH turns alkaline, it can cause cramping. And this is cramping of the peripherals of the limbs, fingers, and toes. But occasionally, it's not uncommon that you may feel cramping of the larger organs. I use, when I first started this practice, I would experience cramping in my chest. Sometimes some people feel cramping in their jaws, in the face. And if this happens, know that you are in charge of this journey. All you need to do is slow down your breath. Slowing down your breath will ease the gaseous exchange, return to nostril breathing. And then once the sensations of tetany subsides, the invitation is to recommit to the breath and start conscious connected breathing with an open mouth. However, if tonight is the night you say to yourself, "You know, I am ready to go past my comfort borders. I'm willing to experiment and just see where my body will take me. And I am willing to feel into all the discomfort, however painful." Of course, you're welcome to come on this journey with me. All you need to do is just continue to breathe. Because the body is very wise. It will adapt, and the sensations will subside, even if you do not slow down your breath. And it has been found with the breathwork journey, the greatest transformation occurs at that point where you are willing to go as far as you can and just see what happens. That's where the magic happens. That's where your body begins to communicate with you and say, "Hi, I'm here. I haven't seen you for a while. Thank you for putting up with the pain. That was just me saying hello. Welcome home." Finally, some contraindications that I need to address. I'm going to put them in chat right now. But of course, for our friends who are watching the recording, you may not see the chat. So contraindications. If you suffer from any of these medical conditions that I'm going to go through very quickly, cardiovascular conditions, if you've had strokes or heart attacks in the past, and it's not well-controlled, okay? Or if you have had detached retina or suffer from glaucoma, and it's not managed, epilepsy, any mental health conditions like schizophrenia, bipolar disorders, high blood pressure, or if you are in a delicate pregnancy stage. If you suffer from any of those conditions that I have mentioned, please join me on a meditative journey and just breathe normally through the nose. And you know, you're still welcome. Consider it like a shamanic meditative journey. You're still welcome here. This is a gathering of ministers, of spiritual healers. And wherever you are in your spiritual journey, you are still welcome. So without further ado, let's begin our journey. We have called our spirit helpers, our guides, our spirit friends, god, sacred spirit. We called them all. And we're going to invite the elementals to be with us tonight, to breathe with us. So let's begin with just nostril breathing. Find yourself in a space. Find yourself in your nest. If you like, you can do this sitting upright, or you can do this lying down. And if you are sitting upright, just make sure you have cushions around you. Movement, body movement is highly encouraged. So at any point you feel that your breath is stirring within you, the desire to move, the desire to speak, the desire to sing, the desire to express your voice, I invite that all. All is welcome here. So if you want to move, make sure that your space surrounding you is safe enough for you to move. Sometimes trembling may occur, and it may feel like you are not in control of that. That is very natural, that is very healing. So right now, just close your eyes if you haven't done so already. And if you feel safe with me right now, then close your eyes and just find yourself in a place of peace. Inviting peace into our lives, inviting healing, not only into our lives, but to the lives around us, the world around us. Inviting healing and peace to all sentient beings, to the trees, to nature, to the rocks, to the stones, to the mountains, to the oceans, to the seas. And just breathing in, landing yourself in this space. See yourself being surrounded by our well ancestors, our guides. As we welcome the music into our lives, still breathing easily and naturally. Notice, notice how your body feels. Notice how the air feels on your skin. Notice the cool air as it flows into your nostrils, becoming warmed by your body. How the chest rises and falls. Breathing in, receiving. Breathing out, releasing. Allowing your body to relax more and more with each out breath. Surrendering to this moment. All there is right now is your breath. Just breathing. Breathe. And now I invite you to relax your jaws. Open your mouth slightly as we begin the conscious connected breathing. Allow your breath to be your guide. Notice any movement in the body. However small, flow with it. Be with your breath. Nice and easy, slowly to begin with. Notice how the body feels. And should the mind comes in, bring your attention back to your breath and just breathe. And now, I invite you all to bring a hand to your heart as we call forth the spirit of fire. Breathing in fire. Fire that ignites our passions. Breathing in fire into our heart. The drive that pushes you with life. How does it feel when we ignite and empower fire in our heart? The eternal flame of our soul that was birthed into us even before the birth of our human body. The eternal flame that has always been there. Healing for the times we have made our light small. But perhaps we have been told our light is too bright. Allow your light to shine. Allow your fire to burn brightly. Share your fire with the lights of the world. Share your fire with each other, with your family, with your partner, with your children, with your pets, and the worlds around you. Charge your fire. This is your fire, your time. Burn brightly. There is no one here to tell you to dim your light. Oh no, oh no. Allow your fire to burn throughout your whole body and allow it to come out through every pore of your body. Allow your light to boost out. Allow your light to ooze out of every orifice until it floods your entire energetic body system. Using your breath as that gas to ignite as well as feed your internal flame, the flame that never ever goes out. Oh, never. And now, I invite you to bring your hand to your liver as we invite the element of wood. And allow that fire in your heart to continue burning as we now bring our hand to our liver and invite wood with all its stability, grounding, strength, bringing into our liver that detoxifies all the impurities of our body. As you place your hand on the liver, the element of wood helps with the detoxification and the purification. And here, where we feel powerful emotions of anger or perhaps the inability to express anger and bringing it within and inward, allow wood to help the liver to purify. Bring your breath and charge your breath into your liver. Allow and trust your breath to be your guide. And if you feel a sound needs to come through, allow it. Trust any sound and movement is healing. It's a release, releasing of tension. As you listen to the drums, the beating of the drums, you can use your hands to beat on the liver gently, tenderly, tapping. And around the liver, around the belly, over to the heart, to the chest, and perhaps tapping the chest and the liver. The strength of wood as it pierces the ground like the roots of the great tree. And now, I invite you all to bring your hands to your kidneys in the back. Here you can massage your lower back as we connect with our ancestors of the wild, the whales, the element of water flowing in our bodies. Continue to breathe into the kidneys. Breathe deep down into every pathway of the kidneys, into the bladder. Activating and awakening every cell of the body that carries water, for we are beings of water. We were born in a sack. Our womb is filled with water. Breathing in our mother's womb, we breathe in water. Listen to the call of your ancestors. We're feeling healing is natural. Feeling is natural. Breathing is natural. And let's bring our hands to the lungs as babies when we were able to breathe in water. See your lungs expanding, all the air sacs, alveoli, expanding with every breath. Expand your chest and as you breathe deeply into your belly, inviting the diaphragm to work with our breath and the lungs. All the respiratory organs working in unison in optimal function. Breathing in as the belly extends, breathing out as the belly falls. And now, we invite the last elemental, the element of earth as we place our hands on our belly, connecting with the earth mother, connecting with our brothers and sisters on earth, all of us. We are all connected. When our brothers and sisters suffer, we suffer. When our mother suffers, we suffer. When our mother feels joy, we feel joy. When our mother feels pain, we feel pain. When our mother breathes, we breathe. The womb of the mother that connects each and every one of us. Calling forth the star nations, the star beings, our star ancestors. We connect with all of them. And now, I invite you to bring your hands and place your hands to that part of the body that brings you greatest peace and greatest comfort, the place on your body that brings you the greatest amount of safety. This is your place, your point of resource. Here you can return anytime that brings you with the greatest connection and immediate connection to source, to great spirit, to creator, to the divine Tao, to Quan Yin, to God, goddesses, divine spirit. You may now return to nostril breathing if you haven't done so and just stay present. Let's take a deep cleansing breath together and do a loud sigh with the out breath. Regulate your fingers and toes and gently open your eyes.
Thank you so much, Harta. Morningstaroracle.com, correct? Yeah. So good. Wonderful. Thank you.